We're going to call a meeting to order. Unfortunately, the live stream is not working directly, so I'm not going to delay the start of the meeting any further than that, any longer than that. So unfortunately, it's...I'm not sure why it's not working. So let's pledge allegiance to the flag. Okay, any public comment on the agenda items? Yes?
Well, I was going to welcome you. I'm sorry the live stream isn't working. I was very excited about this, especially since our channel Huntington Township Watch was what brought this about, actually.
Okay, go ahead.
Even though we were defamed by Mr. King, et cetera, we do provide the meetings to the residents, and as a resident, I'm very proud of our channel. So I'm really sorry that it's not...because I notified a lot of my neighbors, et cetera, because no one would know about it. So the neighbors up around my way do know about it. So they'll be disappointed, but it's a great thing. Thank you.
I'm disappointed as well. Okay, anybody else? Okay, first item is approve the January 6th organizational meeting minutes. It's been distributed. Any questions or comments?
I have none. I'll make a motion to approve the sub.
Okay, some motions are second.
Second.
Moving to second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The irregular meeting minutes from January 6th have been distributed. I'll make a motion we approve those. They're second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the bill list from February 13th, we have it. What up, Gus?
Yep.
The question on the EMC insurance at the $23,000?
That's who's the old Adams County National.
Okay, that's our insurance for the year.
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions on that? We paid the parts of the truck. The truck's been delivered, so that's the $185,000 for the truck itself, not the bed. Any questions on that? Any other questions?
One, who's H.J. Thompson?
That's our treasurer, Bond.
Oh, okay.
I'll make a motion we approve the bill list. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Financial report.
Okay, the financial report for February 13th, 2025. In the general fund, we had receipts of $42,720.69. We had expenditures of $60,549.09. That lets a balance in the general fund of $795,981.64. In the ARP, we had interest received, $13.99. Expenditures, $185,871. That lets a balance in the ARP of $30,795.27. In the state fund, interest received, $10.68. There were no expenditures, and that lets a balance in the state fund of $125,802.5. So a total of all the accounts as of today is $952,578.96.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. Any miscellaneous items?
Well, yes, the 4H meets here, and they need kids. The membership isn't what it used to be. They used to have a whole group, and now there's like three or four, and you needed to have four to have a meeting. So invite everybody to come join 4H. It's worthwhile. Penn State kind of manages it, and the kids do put their projects in the South Mountain Fair, and there's a lot involved, and it's nice for the kids.
Okay, thank you. Roadmaster's report, Chuck?
Yeah, we've been up this month. As everybody knows, we've been doing a lot of winter meetings. The Greenbrier Calvert, the Calvert is erected and sitting on foundation. I have to finish the head walls, and it should be ready to backfill after they get the head walls and head walls constructed, as you said. We got our new plow truck chassis in, went down to Hunter Peak to look over to make sure it all specs for what we spec'd out. And it was delivered out to the body company out in Huntington to get the bed for one of them.
Thank you. Any questions? Do you have a rising report? You guys have anything?
I have nothing.
I have nothing.
I have a couple things. Gary Schaefer, who's a licensed architect, was here to inspect the building and make findings on the ADA compliance. He, I talked to him yesterday. He's going to supposedly have it done next week. His walkthrough, he identified a few small things, nothing major, but he'll come, he'll put something in writing, and we'll deal with that.
Question? I'm sorry, I thought we were done.
I am done on that side.
Oh, I just had a question. Will there be a written report on the assessment?
That's, yeah, I said he will provide us something in writing.
Yeah, I didn't hear you say that, so.
Okay, yes, of course.
Yeah.
Of course, we'll do something in writing. We're not going to do any, take any action until we get that, so we know specifically what may or may not be done. Okay. Up at the Idylville, Idylville-York Springs Road, there's been issues about that for several months, and the PennDOT has asked us to, they're going to do a traffic study about trucks turning into theirs, because it's been an issue for months, so they're, that's in the process. At the Adams County Cog meeting, there's a question about broadband. You know, there's a contract out there for additional broadband hookups in our township and through the county. I guess specifically for addresses, they're not going to give them out yet, they said. It's been a long, arduous process.
It's like one, you know?
Yeah. And so that's going on. Yeah, that's all I have. Okay. Gus, your zoning officer reports?
Yeah. Let me get it up here. All right, I can't get it up here, but they issued a bunch of reports, or permits, on January the 4th. Kyle Smith, 95 Tammy Drive for 23 rooftop solar panels. On the 11th of January, permit to Dennis Rudolph, 910 Wireman's Middle Road. He's replaced, he's got five starchy barns on the property. Four of the older ones, he's replacing the siding and the walls, and those buildings are 50 feet by 300 feet long. I issued a permit to Kirby and Krista Martin and Wireman's Middle Road for, they're going to remove the existing laundry that's attached to the house, rebuild a laundry room and add a kitchen. Garment Homes at 115 Tammy Drive, they got a permit to build a two-story single-family dwelling. Got issued an occupancy permit to Joe Sanders at 105 Tracy Drive. He got 38 solar panels installed on his house, and the file inspector is talking. Issued a permit to Martin Dayberry at 1410 Jean Club Road. He's gonna, he's got a two-car garage on the house. He wants to close that and use it for a shop and build a two-car addition in front of the existing garage, which will be attached to the dwelling. Adam Raver at 289 Bolton Road, he is building a new single-family dwelling, single-story. And then another permit to Garment Homes at 145 Tammy Drive for a, to build a two-story single-family dwelling. Those are the extent of the permits that I issued. I have a subdivision which came in to 4J Farm at 1010 Cranberry Road. There's subdividing a 2-acre lot off the Asper Farm. That has to go before the planning commission. We're waiting on county comments. I got the engineer's comments, so. I'm working on the report to the annual FEMA report, and there's only one problem in Huntington Township that the public should be even aware of in terms of flooding, and that's on Willow Lane, there's a little bridge. And if you get heavy rain, the water will come up over that bridge. And if you have a car, I wouldn't drive through it if you got a truck. It's not really a problem. It's a perennial problem when it's been here. I always write that on my report when I send it to them. Now they're also asking what efforts we're making to mitigate the situation. I don't see any reason why we should do anything to mitigate that. I don't even know how you would approach that. So I want you to be aware that that's what I'm going to send them. I don't think it'll go anywhere, because they got other things to worry about. But I wanted you to be aware of that. LCDM down on 255 White Church Road, the weather is holding up their progress. They still have to clear the front yard. They want to put in a driveway to the overhead doors that are on the front of the building. They want to put water, they have an existing well into the building, and they want to put a septic system in, and all of that's waiting to be cleared. So nothing's going on there. Flowing Springs, from what I can understand, they're down to one lot now that's vacant. I had a call on to that Tammy Drive, which is their last road down below. That's not dedicated to us.
Right.
As the new developer, they're responsible for moving snow, but there are some holes that are on that road. So he said he'd take care of that. And the other thing I got on here is that, given the weather, the trash company, our pickup day is on Friday. If they get snow in the beginning of the week, Friday gets pushed to Saturday, and the guys who do the driving on Saturday, I don't think are the guys who normally do it. And so they're famous for missing stops, and one time they missed the entire subdivision back in Flowing Springs. I, well, you're aware of it, because I know I talked to you, and you got, we got a complaint. There isn't a whole lot you can do when you get a, someone doesn't call you, that your report's a missed pickup, and tells you, we haven't been picked up the last four weeks.
Right.
So anyway, they are addressing that situation. Just wanted everybody to be aware of that. So that's all I've got.
Thank you. Any questions for Gus? Engineer report, Scott?
Eric. Chuck gave you a progress report on Greenbrier Road. I finally received comments from DEP from Myers Town, and I made those updates already and got it back in today. So a two-day turnaround's pretty good. So we'll see how long this takes, and we might still might be able to bid at the end of March. We'll have to see.
Okay.
The planning commission's continuing to work on the update for the Saldau. We're working with Andrew at the county conservation, or county planning for that. I received a call from the Conservation District regarding stormwater issues at EB Clearing regarding their permit termination. I asked her for some plans and reports and whatnot to study. We didn't have any on file. It looks like she sent an email to Pat, but I didn't get a copy of that yet. Plans being reviewed. One item there I forgot to put on was the 4J Farm subdivision that Gus talked about. JVI Group, board action is required by 5:18. I received a call from the Conservation District that they did receive approval for that NPDS permit. So I think we're ready for a young, good, for the planning commission now, the end of the month here. The only thing outstanding should be the PennDOT permit, and I think they're pretty close to getting that. And at the request of the Planning Commission, I performed a site inspection at JVI on Tuesday the 4th. I sent a copy of that report to Pat if you want to look at that. And everything's progressing according to the plan, so no issues.
Any questions for Scott?
I've got a question. And I don't know if it would be considered old business or new business. But anyhow, my name is Jesse Ripley, April 130, Wireman's Middle Road. Back October 31st of 2019, I made my first complaint about my neighbor's runoff water on my property. So moving forward to five years, so last year Scott ripped up this paper, and I did everything that I was told to do. And yet, the neighbors have still not done anything about their water. So that is Steve Parr at 161 Wireman's Middle Road, and his son David Parr at 82 South Ridge I still getting massive amount of water heading towards my place, and now that my chimney is starting to pull from the house. I've put, last year from May till about August, I put $8,000 worth of stone to keep my cattle up out of the mud there from the water run down. I cut a 300-foot ditch down through my property to divert the water from the house. He still has not did anything with the downspout shooting towards my house, and his son has not done anything with his retaining pond leaking. So that was last year when Scott ripped this paper up. Now, whenever there in August, whenever Jay had his meeting, I mentioned about this. Still nothing has come. So I'm wondering, is there going to be something done for them, or do I got to take matters into my own hands and get equipment down through there?
Have you looked at this, Scott?
Yes, I looked at it again after the zoning hearing meeting, and I took photographs. I noted it wasn't re-rectified yet, and I sent a report to Pat regarding that.
Okay. What are recourse, Todd, as far as what jurisdiction or authority do we have?
So what is causing the problem?
Okay, downspouts from the neighbor's building are directed directly towards his house, and I recommended that they be piped and directed away from his house towards the Wireman's Middle Road.
Is it new construction that was like subject to stormwater management?
Yes. The garage that was built is less than two years old. It was a new ride or shut, so it should have been, should have been directed away from the house.
I have the whole letter right here from last year, if you want to see it.
So if they're not complying with the stormwater management ordinance, they could be cited for not complying with it. If it's something that's been existing for a while before anything new was built, that might be something that's outside the township's realm, or?
Well, we'd attention on is not, it's failing. It's leaking water onto him.
That's a neighboring property. That's not that shit garage.
Right, but that's also related to the situation.
I mean, I understand the whole property's slip down, I'm one of the downslip. I understand that. So I had, I finally got Scott to come out there and make yourself pump, cut my swell. I've done all that. I mean, I can't tell you how much water is coming down through me. And I understand that my property is on the downslide, and I, that's where my couple thousand dollars worth of stone came in. But the thing is that that retaining pond was engineered, because I'm agricultural. So when he built the new house six, seven years ago, they had to put that retaining pond in. It's failing. It's, when I say it's running on my place, we're not talking like a little drip from a faucet. We're talking that the kids could ride boogie boards down through my yard. And then Steve Parr built that garage. Why they put the downspout on the backside of the house, or the building, shooting at my house, when they could have put it at the front of the building and shot it right to the roof of it, I don't know. But I've had enough. I, I'm at the point where, like I said, my chimney is starting to pull from the house at two inches at the top. This should not be my problem.
So is it a stormwater management retention coming?
For the neighboring dwelling, yes.
Okay. So I think, just, I'll give it to Scott to see what it is that might be a violation, and then we'll determine if they can be cited. So I have to rectify.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fire company reports. Everybody's here. Okay, we move on to old business. We talked about the Greenbrier and the Myers Town Building Road. You get that permit yet?
Yes, we got that whenever weather conditions weren't, we'll put that in.
Okay, road salt. Next item is determine amount of the road salt required for the 25, 26 PennDOT salt contract. Do you have any recommendations on the volume we should bid?
About 100 tons, like we do.
Okay. Is there a motion to that effect?
I'll make a motion we order 100 tons, or bid, or however we determine 100 tons for the contract.
Okay. Seconded.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We received the audit, audit or general reports for two of the fire companies that we contribute, one to New York Springs and the Bender'sville. There were some issues, some minor issues on both of them, but they passed the audit. There are just some recommendations that they need to take care of. I have to reading through them, and that will be addressed. I've talked to the Secretary of York Springs Fire Company, and that's already in process. Any questions about that? Okay, new business, determine attendees to PSAT's conference in May for registration. I don't plan on, I don't plan on attending.
I would. I'd as well.
Okay. Chuck, you guys, you guys going to go?
Yeah, we're probably going to go, because there are some good seminars over there when they're going on.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we allow the roadmaster and assist the roadmaster to attend to the seminars as needed, as needed. Is there a second to that?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We received the approval letter from EB Clearing for the NPDS discharge permit, is the renewal, if I read it correctly. So they just, they copied us on that document, so we already received of that document.
They're updating some stormwater issues to be able to terminate that permit.
Okay.
What's the property address for that permit, for EB Clearing?
EB Clearing.
370 White Church Road.
Does that have anything to do with the, what you were checking that was not done? Is that two different things?
That was included in my report.
Okay.
They have to correct that to get renewed from it.
To get the permit terminated.
The permit is 346 White Church Road, EB Clearing, is on the official document. Okay, next item is discuss and take action on appointment of open records officer. After last, after the last meeting, I discussed this with Pat, the open records requirement and the time that requires her to take care of these is very, has grown quite a bit in the last several years. We have eight new requests since our last meeting, and to that end, it's not giving her the time to get her normal functions done. I mean, Pat's been a trooper trying to take care of these, but I think to be fair to her, we need to look at, look at other ways to deal with them, and I am fine with doing that.
You're okay with that?
Yep.
Can I make a motion, then, that you be the open records officer?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, discussion. Before there's a question, I talked to Todd, and that there's no legal issue with that being done. I am allowed to do that. I've also talked to our internet provider, and we will set up a separate email account that goes to the open records officer directly. That's already taken care of, so that it's going to be open records officer, so whoever's in that position.
Whoever does that job.
People will get those emails. Okay. Yes?
Are you finished with that?
We didn't vote yet, but.
Okay, I'm sorry, you can vote. Go ahead. I have questions about it.
Okay. Any other discussions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
So thank you for explaining why you were going to be appointed. I'd like to know, though, Pat, on the agenda that I looked at this morning, have you changed this item, the wording of this item for discuss and take action on appointment of open records officer? Because I thought this morning it didn't say that, it just said appointment of records officer, or am I mistaken?
The agenda I read last night matches this.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted clarification. Thank you. My question's about, okay, I understand that Pat, I was going to wait till the end of, I'd like to say my little.
Is this your public comment now?
Well, it's about this.
Okay.
It's about, I'd like to sit here, you know, honestly. Okay. So I was wondering, how is this going to benefit the residents? Is this going to now, because you're going to be the records officer? How will this benefit the residents? Because when we've, basically, I'm practically the only one who does open records requests besides a couple others from out of state. So how is that going to benefit? Will we be getting our records request responses within the five-day, or is this going to continue? Is this just another way of blocking or putting up another wall so there's no transparency in this township? Is this just another way of blocking or putting up another wall so there's no transparency in this, uh, township?
Yeah, I don't think I'm gonna answer that, because I'm really not sure what you're...
Okay, if you don't want to answer, that's fine.
No, we, we will follow the open records officer, the law. We will meet those requirements. That's our intent, that's always been our intent, and to my knowledge, it's been, been, we, we have complied with the law.
Okay. So, I want to speak about the right to know requests, um, as far as why there are eight from me on there. So, at the January seventh, twenty twenty-five Board of Auditors meeting, elected auditor Laura Hope finally admitted that she had deleted the video she had recorded of me at a public meeting. Auditor Laura Hope's belligerent and defiant behavior on deleting that video casts serious questions as to the integrity of not only her as, as an elected auditor, but also on the board of auditors and this township's governance of everyone at that front table. The right to know request that I submitted, those eight that you are on the agenda this evening, are a direct result of the auditor Hope's decision to delete a township record, which is a criminal offense here in Pennsylvania. And the initial response that I received from Pat. So, I'm glad, Mr. Uh, Solicitor King, that you've decided, as I have requested, that, um, you have open files and bill, um, individual matters rather than putting them under the general, which you've been doing for the past, like, since you began into January twenty-four. So I was very pleased to know that the right to know request, you and, uh, let me see, Mr. Bell, I believe, he's an attorney in your firm, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So there's a, a bill for just two right to know requests about the ADA that I brought up. That's why you're having the assessment done, because since nineteen nineties, you have not been in compliance with those assessments which were supposed to be done. And then it was, um, John Danacola, he is out of state. He also requested the video that Laura Hope took, Hope took of me. So we have eight days. And because this bill states nine hundred eighty-five dollars and eighty cents just on right to know request, this bill indicates to me as a resident that there were issues with it. And this looks to me like it's a roadblock. I don't know why request, every request that I've ever done has to go to Todd King. That is a waste of the taxpayers' money, and I realize why you're doing this, but let me tell you. If Laura Hope, and I told her at that meeting she was not to delete that, she admitted to on video, it's personal satire. She was trying to retaliate against me as a resident, and I, you know, I don't put up with that nonsense from anyone in this place. So I'm glad, and I'm so happy about the live stream, because you know what? The more eyes on this toxic group, the better.
Thank you.
There's a hand up in the back.
Yes. Betsy?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Betsy, how are your experience? Are you going to hire someone for this position?
No, no, I'm going to do it.
Oh, you're going to do it?
I'm going to do it.
Oh, so it's not going to cost us any more money?
No.
Okay.
Only if the attorney gets involved.
The next item is acknowledging, we've been invited to New York Springs Fire Company's Appreciation banquet, March eighth, to let Pat know if you would like to attend. Okay? Subdivisions of JBI, this is your turn, Steve.
I'll try to be green. Uh, Scott touched on a couple parts, let, let me just, uh, expand on that a little bit. Uh, you've been out to the site a couple times, let me know if we're in violation. We'll fix whatever you come up with. Uh, Christina over at the Conservation District did issue a revised MPDS permit, if you want to put it that way, last week on, next Tuesday, the eighteenth. We're gonna be following new plans with you guys, with you, and with the Conservation District. And basically, that'll be a major revision to the MPDS permit. That'll pick up the MRC concept, the stormwater, so forth and so on. What I did is because our understanding of the MRC concept, that it has to be kicked up the DEP for their review, knowing that we want to try to get some fill done over the winter months, we kind of did a stopgap revision to the permit, that's what Christina approved last week, that took that limit of disturbance down to the bottom. That would now encompass the proposed stormwater facility that will start out as a sediment basin. We'll convert that later. So now that we have that, that full area in, in approval, if you want to put it that way, over the next few weeks, hopefully, we'll bench that out at the bottom, start our way up the hill. Uh, I did just get approval from our geotechnical engineer on the block wall. That's gonna be on the plans, and again, you'll see all this on Tuesday. Uh, the HOP permit, yes, we're, we're very close. Unfortunately, with, I think, two comments, it all hinges back on the Conservation District giving their letter, and this is where I'm in the quagmire, that if that has to be kicked up the DEP, it's probably gonna be spring or summer before we get that letter. So even though we're real close on the HOP, that may sit in limbo for several months yet. Christina, however, thinks that, and these are the new regulations that just came out, that everybody seems unclear on still. She's thinking that it may not have to go to DEP. Nothing would make me happier. I think she's wrong, but I'm not gonna say anything, and we'll see how that plays out. Uh, as far as everything else, it seems to be going okay. Uh, everybody loves a new office, I don't go in, but you're welcome to stop by, they all love it. Uh, other than the HOP, the MPDS, the plan itself, we'll work out our final questions with you. It's my thought, and I think we're up for an extension soon, Gus, yes?
Yeah, your extension's good for me, I believe.
Again, if I were to foresee, we probably would need another, depending on if it has to go to DEP or not. But in reality, over the next month or two, we'll probably be done with Scott, awaiting then the HOP, which is in turn awaiting the approval from the Conservation District, which is in turn waiting approval from DEP. And other than that, I think we're doing pretty good.
Why don't you send this approval letter from Christina to DEP?
We, we are, uh, and, and actually, we're sending that over to, uh, John up at, uh, at Traffic Design.
That should satisfy them.
Yeah, it's, the sooner the better for me too. But, uh, I think, uh, I think that's where we are right now. Does anybody have any questions?
Yes, sir.
I'll be here at planning week after next, and try to go over things with them, and, uh, we'll just kind of work our way through these next months.
Yeah, I have a question. Uh, I attend the planning commission meetings. Tom, uh, who I believe is the vice chair, is he the vice chair of planning? He had requested, uh, two months ago for Gus to have your engineer at a meeting, and, uh, at the last meeting, he did not show up. Gus, Gus claimed he was busy. So is your, um, engineer gonna show up to the planning commission meeting?
I attend all the meetings.
Are you an engineer?
I am not.
Okay. Well, planning commission wanted your engineer here.
And again, I can talk to the planning commission about that. I've done subdivision and land development for over a quarter of a century in this area, and I have a pretty good grasp on things. But if there's something that the engineer should have to address, we'll make sure he's here.
Okay.
I'd like to make a comment. It's not required that the engineer attends these meetings?
Right.
Just the owner or the owner's representative?
A planning commission member requested the engineer. So that's be, this is what happens with the governance here, but, okay.
Well, I wasn't at the planning commission meetings, I don't know what was said or not said, but, but I'm not gonna comment on that. If the plan guy is wanting there, they can decide.
Just go to our channel, you can see the meeting.
Oh, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Again, altered.
Okay, let's move on. The other subdivision we've talked about, thank you. The Forte subdivision.
Yeah, they're submitted a subdivision of a two acre lot that actually fronts on Willow Lane. Or not Willow, Old Ziegler Mill Road.
Mill Road, yeah.
And, uh, that has to go before the planning commission. We've got, uh, the comments from Scott, our engineer, we need county comments, so if lightning strikes and the county gets their comments to it, we might look at it in the next planning meeting. But it's scheduled for actually the March meeting.
Thank you. Right to know request, uh, there's a read of Marie DeGangi, January sixth, twenty-five, shared design, November twenty-four invoices. Second one, Marie DeGangi, one, six, twenty-five, Salson Hughes invoices for November. Marie DeGangi, one, ten, twenty-five, text, emails, communication between auditors regarding four thirteen, twenty-four, auditors meeting, video recording. Fourth one, John Dean Nicola from Massachusetts, January thirteenth, emails, texts between auditors and secretary treasurer from four thirteen, twenty-four through ten, twenty-five, twenty-four. Five, Michael Roast, January twenty-third, twenty-five, current property and casualty insurance policy information. Number six, Marie DeGangi, January twenty-seventh, twenty-five, text, emails, correspondence between auditors from any and all their devices from January, January first, twenty-four through January twenty-seventh, twenty-five. Second part, text, emails, correspondence between auditors from any and all their devices that contain the keywords Marie and/or Marie DeGangi from January first, twenty-four through January twenty-seventh, twenty-five. Number seven, Marie DeGangi, January thirty-first, twenty-five, opened on two, three, twenty-five. Text, emails, correspondence between secretary treasurer and auditors from any and all their devices from four, one, twenty-four to January thirty-first, twenty-five. Second part, text, emails, and correspondence between secretary treasurer and auditors in connection with four thirteen, twenty-four, auditors meeting, video recording from four, one, twenty-four to one, thirty-one, twenty-five. Third part, text, emails, and correspondence between secretary treasurer and auditors in connection with right to know submitted by Marie DeGangi dated ten, sixteen, twenty-four. Text, emails, and correspondence between secretary treasurer and auditors that contain the keywords Marie and/or Marie DeGangi from January, from April first, twenty-four to January thirty-first, twenty-five. Eighth one, Marie DeGangi, two, seven, twenty-five, any and all texts sent and received by Roadmaster Chuck King from his personal cellphone using his duties as an employee of the township. Upcoming meetings, the planning commission is here on the twenty-fourth of February, seven. The Narima meeting is at six of PM on March fifth at Franklin Township. Our next meeting is Tuesday, I mean, I'm sorry, Thursday, March thirteenth at seven PM. Public comment, anybody have a public comment? Yes?
Anyone else? Okay, uh, your website is actually very nice.
Thank you.
Um, I did come across, uh, the planning commission members, they indicate Kyle Smith twice, and they have forgotten about Tom Cypher.
Tom Striften.
Striften, yeah. So, uh, also, in the notice of, I believe, the reorganization, it indicated notice, I think it said comment, and then it said misfit admin, admin. And when I clicked on that, up comes a photo of a woman in a cowboy hat. I have, I, I'll send Pat that, um, screenshot. But who, who is misfit admin?
Misfit admin is the people that update and maintain our website for us through our administrator. We give them the information, then they put it on the website.
Okay, what, okay, so their name is on there, they're in charge of that? Because when I looked at it earlier this evening, it indicated that notice was Christine Huntington. So who is Christine?
Christine is our admin assistant that gives them the information, and they actually physically put it on the website.
Okay. So we'll be seeing misfit admin as...
I don't know, I, I can look at that, I have no idea.
Yeah, the name is very unprofessional, though. Yeah. Uh, by the way, what is the, this architectural firm that, when I questioned about the ADA assessment back in the nineties, and you had no records of ever doing assessments?
I went here in the nineties, man, first of all.
No, I know that.
Okay.
But there was an attorney, and there was a board, and the reason I asked...
Let me interrupt you, the, the assessments don't have to be saved, okay? So, I mean, they might have been done, so...
Well, I would assume you'd have something in your minutes, but, uh, the, the architectural firm was never really discussed. What is the name of the architectural firm, and how much is the cost of that?
Shaffer, Shaffer, Gary Shaffer, Shaffer Design from Gettysburg.
Okay, and what is the cost? Because that was never discussed at a public meeting.
His, whatever his billing rate is.
Exactly.
His billing rate, whatever he's gonna bill us for, he was here basically half an hour or so, so whatever.
Okay. That's it?
Any other public comment? Here now, make a motion for adjournment, is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye? Aye. Opposed? Thank you for coming.